Hello everybody and welcome to another Justin of Heshi Show. And it's gonna be a very cool and interesting show, guys. Because I'm gonna give you a plan for this city. And I first would like to introduce my beautiful co-host, Soya. How are you?
Hi, everybody. Great to be here.
And she said I was making fun of her hair. I'm still gonna make fun of your hair. It's so pretty she has it in a ponytail just to trick me. How are you, Soya? How was your week?
Okay. A great week.
Great, great. I'm so happy. We're gonna talk about my fundraiser last week because I missed the show. How you ran the show.
I heard it was successful.
And you ran a great show, by the way. I have no complaints. Well, I do have a lot of complaints. I always do a lot of complaints.
You want me to leave?
I just got that.
Bummi's not here. Bummi's not here because his vest ripped and he couldn't find a new vest for the show.
Very funny. Okay, okay.
Anyways, and then we-
He's on a secret mission.
And we have a special guest tonight, guys. Sam Perizzolo. Did I say that right?
You said that great. Hello, New York City.
Sam is running for district, for council, city council member of the 50th District. And I'm crying and begging him to join my team and team up with me. Because we are going to take over the city council and the plan is coming together, guys. It's starting to work. We are close, but we're gonna do this later, later on. We're gonna talk to you, Sam. You can tell us anything you want. We're gonna fight with you as well. Because you have some serious homeless issues and what you have plans for. And according to your mayor, he's really in charge and he's gonna put you in your place. Anyways, tonight's show, we're gonna talk about a lot of different items. And you can call into the show, Soya, to what-
718-289-0070.
718-289-0070. Or you can YouTube us. You could see us on YouTube, Justin of Heshi. Facebook, Justin of Heshi. And of course, you're listening to us on Channel 620 AM. And don't forget, we have YouTube Super Chaps. You can ask me any single question you want. And my friend Sam will answer them because he's really in charge of the show tonight. Anyway, Soya-
Soya, you get a raise.
No, stop, Sam, you need to fire it.
We have our shout-outs.
Yes.
Did I do that right?
You did good.
Yeah. Shout-outs to Mira Nava-
My granddaughter, Sam, by the way.
Lila Tamar.
By the way, I took me another-
Sergeant Peters.
I went with-
And Shawnee and Dove Hykins, our dear friends.
And you know my friend Ellie too. As you know, I took my daughter out for, my granddaughter out for pizza today. And we were the-
No lollipops?
No, yeah, I did. I snuck her. But you know what? I was caught because my son didn't let me take her home. He met me on the road and he caught me with a lollipop. He said, "I knew it." I said, "No, no, I didn't give her the lollipop. It was somebody else." But she pointed her finger. That little snitch pointed her finger.
Who was it? Big H?
Big H, yeah. This time she knew how to say Big H real quickly. Anyways, who's sponsoring our show? This show, I have to start changing the sponsorship. It's going to be sponsored by the campaign to elect Heshi Tishla. So we are, the Heshi Tishla campaign is sponsoring the show. Plus, we have a lot of advertisers on the show as well that love us. And we're gonna make sure that you guys do business with them. And who's our first advertiser tonight, Soya?
High Tech Web Group. Have you been pushing off remodeling or creating a website? Well, now you don't have to any longer. Let High Tech Web Group's team of professionals construct your site with skill and precision. You can reach High Tech Web Group at 212-235-2777. Check out their website at info@hightechwebgroup.com. That's I-N-F-O at H-I-T-E-C-H-W-E-B-G-R-O-U-P dot com. Call High Tech Web Group today so you can experience a whole new world of business. 212-235-2777. We would not have this show if it was not for-
Without Jaime, yeah.
Without High Tech-
Jaime, thank you for everything you do for us and make us looking good always on the video. May God bless you. And we are gonna run a campaign for your youth center that the rabbi has, me and Avram are involved with as well. We're running a campaign to raise money for our special youths. They're not special. They just needed a place to go. And look at Jaime, he has his own business. He's come a long way. Baba Bad loves him. And it's called 1225. We have a youth center with kids coming and going with GD programs. And it's just, yeah, we've been doing it for many, many years. And we need to raise the money because we don't wanna close down. And next on our list, Soya.
Plaza Auto Leasing. Are you a PAL, a Plaza Auto Leasing customer? They are not only a leasing company, but also a dealership. You get the best of both worlds, the flexibility to lease or buy any vehicle, make or model, combined with quick service, huge inventory and easy approvals. There is no finance manager to meet with, just a friendly PAL, Plaza Auto Leasing Sales Representative, that can handle most of the transactions from start to finish without you even having to step foot in their office. All you have to do is place your order and they will even deliver your car right to your door. What are you waiting for? Become a PAL and call Plaza Auto Leasing today. You can reach Plaza Auto Leasing at 718-975-9000. You can also check out their website at www.plazautoleasing.com. That's P-L-A-Z-A-A-U-T-O-L-E-A-S-I-N-G dot com. Located at 2750 Nostrand Avenue on the corner of Nostrand Avenue and Avenue N. Call 718-975-9000 and become a PAL today. And don't forget to tell them Uncle Heshi sent you.
By the way, all of these banners are popping up on your site. So if you see it on camera, you'll see the banners, you see the phone number, addresses. And I love Plaza. Matter of fact, my lease is up in two months and I'm gonna be getting a new car by Plaza Auto Leasing. Wonderful place.
They're really, they're amazing. They have electric car, they have everything.
I know they're not in Staten Island, but you can come to Brooklyn.
You know what I love about them?
What?
You can go there and they will most probably be able to literally pull up the car right there.
They give you even a sample cut. What's next on our list, sweetie?
Cook's Power. Cook's Power, a family-owned and operated company serving the Brooklyn community and local areas, committed to quality and superior customer service. They specialize in residential and commercial lighting installation and repairs, as well as wiring or rewiring of your home or business. Check out their website, www.cookspowerNYC dot com. That's W-W-W dot K-U-G-S-P-O-W-E-R-N-Y-C dot com. Or call Cook's Power at 347-794-8236. That's 347-794-8236.
Or email them at k-u-g-s-p-o-w-e-r at gmail dot com. By the way, electric is not something to mess around with, guys. I've seen fires. There was a recent fire. Be careful. Get a licensed electrician. Don't mess around, guys. And we're good to go. And we have, what do we have next?
Call Cook's Power and live a happy life.
Got you. We got Green Line Building Solutions.
We do?
We do. That's me.
Preservation and Development, Fire Department, Criminal Court, Department of Finance, Environmental Control Board, Settlements, Building Consulting, Violation Removal, Construction Management, Owner Compliance, Contracting License Department of Building Expeditors, Designs, Professionals for all your building solutions. Located in the heart of Brooklyn at 202 Forster Avenue. You can reach Green Line Building Solutions. That's 718-871-0382. That's 718-871-0382.
Located at 202 Forster Avenue. Sam, I want you to know that I was fighting with the building department this weekend. I passed a couple inspections. And now they started to torture another big developer. And the guy was just making them crazy. I said, "Listen, we complied." "Well, you didn't really comply." I said, "We went through audits. It took us two years to get this project to fruition." "Well, the examiners at the other DOB don't know what we do." I said, "That's the dumbest thing I've ever said."
No common sense, right?
No. So I said to him, "When I get to the city council, you know, we're gonna fix up the DOB." I says, "Hope for the better." I said, "Not only hope for the better. You just wait till I defund you. Your agency will be the first one I'm looking at." I said, "You're gonna give me a meeting." He says, "Okay, come in next week." I said, "It's not a threat and I'm coming in there next week. I'm coming in. You're gonna open my job because you guys are wrong and I know the laws, but they're just torturing our people, spending billions of dollars. And we're gonna work on all these government agencies."
Our homeowners too, not necessarily just the contractors.
That's what I'm doing. I'm going through, ask Soya, homeowner after homeowner. I'm getting people-
Our city's being destroyed.
Violations and violations. But we're gonna fix that up anyways. We have next on our-
Moylow Iron Works. This is an extraordinary company. Brian is the owner and I can tell you personally that he is friendly, knowledgeable and helpful, professional, always on time and has fear pricing. Moylow treats every customer with a personal and individualized approach. If you're looking to have ironwork done in your home or place of business, look no further. Moylow does structural gates, railings, porches, window guards, security doors, awnings and all welding and repairs. Call Moylow for all your metal fabrications at 917-325-0627. That's 917-325-0627. You could check out their Facebook at www.facebook.com backslash Moylow Iron Works. That's M-O-Y-L-O-W-I-R-O-N-W-O-R-K-S. Located in the heart of Brooklyn, serving all five boroughs and Long Island. Call Moyloy Iron Works today for a free estimate at 917-325-0627.
Wow. Traveler's Choice, your only need, your only choice for travel.
Where's Bummi?
Where's Bummi? He messes it up every week.
Joseph and Devora Lifer. You can reach Joseph and Devora Lifer at josephl@travelerschoice.com. That's J-O-S-E-P-H-L at travelerschoice.com. That's T-R-A-V-E-L-E-R-S-S-C-H-O-I-C-E dot com. They're located in Manhattan, but don't worry, they serve everyone everywhere. You can reach them at 212-868-8698. And they can take care of not only your flights, they can take care of all your travel-
All your travel needs. 212-868-8698. Personal friends of mine that helped us out a lot. Now, Sam, I know we made you bored with all the commercials. It's all over. But we are gonna talk about heshitishla.com. Heshitishla.com. We do need, we do need some volunteers. You can call me a volunteer at 646-535-0036. It's my headquarters on 1212 Avenue M. We're gonna have town hall meetings starting in about two weeks. You're all gonna be able to pop over.
Is there gonna be pizza?
Pizza, of course, pizza. Town hall meetings. We're gonna have chairs, ask questions, 646-535-0036. Come join me. Be a volunteer to the Heshi Tishla. We have six weeks to the election to go, June 22nd. And it's not only for me, it's for Sam. I want you guys to join in. And we're gonna talk to Sam right now.
I'm just doing one more plug over here. Are you buying or selling a property and need an attorney to do your closing or any contractual needs? Look no further and call Abraham HoShander at 718-435-3402. That's 718-435-3402.
Anyways, this is my card for the Heshi Tishla Edition Card Campaign. And I have this question. We're gonna, we're gonna talk to Sam right now. Sam is running for city council for the 50th District in Staten Island. Republican or Democrat?
I'm running as a Republican. It's the only way to be on Staten Island.
Okay, but makes no difference because we are gonna team up together. So we're gonna work as the dynamic duo, Batman and Robin. Okay, he can be Batman, whatever. I really wanna be Batman, Sam.
God, it's your show, bro.
I know. Wow, this is a good guy. We're gonna knock out this city. I have no problem working with Republicans. I wanna work as a team. Remember, we are representing the people. But anyway, Sam, we're gonna start the show. I'm gonna let you talk. But every show I have a joke and a quote. You have to laugh, Sam, please. I know it's not funny, but still try.
Go ahead.
I make fun of Linda every week. Last week I wasn't here. I was at a fundraiser. Soya took over the show. She thinks she did a great job and she did wonderful. She even did-
I didn't think I did a great job.
I know. People complained, but-
I said I was okay.
I think you were great, Soya. I don't care.
Now you're saying that to me because you're on the air and you're on the spot.
I'm not on the spot. You're wonderful. And I say you look pretty today. Anyways, so here's my problem. Linda missed the joke of the week. She was so happy, even though you made a joke. So here's the joke that would happen with me and Linda. So I had a little argument with Linda on Tuesday. I said, "Linda, I think the new dryer is shrinking my clothing." And Linda says to me, "No, Heshi, sweetie, that was the new refrigerator." Anyway, why couldn't you? Sam, you didn't even laugh, Sam. You didn't even try. Anyways.
Do you, do you know, just, I, do you know what this Sunday is?
Yes, it's Mother's Day.
What are you doing for Linda?
So I never buy flowers. Lately, I've been buying flowers. And then I bought flowers this week. I left it on my desk for two hours. I come back, it's a missing penny. My partner stole the flowers for Linda.
One second. That's what you're gonna do is possibly flowers on Mother's Day?
And pizza.
She gave you children. She raised them.
And I've been married to her for 31 years, suffering-
And every year you should be doing more.
I do. I buy her pizza. This week, this time will be a whole pie.
This year's gonna be a two pies.
There better be a lot more than pizza and flowers.
She only has one slice. It's you and me are gonna eat the two pies. But here's a quote-
So do you have them delivered? Do you bake them your own?
No, no, we go pick them up. I go to different pizza shops every day, every week. But I wanna tell you, there's a quote that I made specifically for Sam that's coming to the show tonight. And this is for you, Sam. There are no questions and there are no answers. That, what it seems like, is the business of these politicians and leaders that are in power. But not me and you, Sam. There will be questions and there will be answers. Is that correct, Sam?
Not only that, there need to be consequences.
And there will be consequences. We will punish them. We will go after them. We will torture them. And this is unacceptable to, for us, to, anyways, call into the show, 718-289-0070. Sam, I have a question for you. As you know, you and me are going to be a city councilman. June 22nd is our election. What is your deal? I mean, you know and I know, with these, with these, there's 35 new of us coming in there. You and I are gonna create a powerful alliance of 26 councilmen. We're gonna take over this thing. We're not gonna let stupid legislation. We're gonna fix these committees up. We're gonna go after these 312 government agency. But you know, during the pandemic, and as you can see with your friend over there, with the bar over there, different agencies were able to come and just punish him together. When, in, during the year, they won't even help us.
Right.
I don't understand. $90 billion budget, homeless shelters, which I have a solution for. I don't want corrugated homeless shelters. I'm gonna be making homeless shelters. I just got my third one approved. They're gonna be senior adult centers or plain adult, where anybody can come, live two in a room. You can come and go as you please. There'll be supportive programs over there. If you wanna come, they remember the 20, they're not gonna sleep on floors. I've been to so many homeless shelters, Sam. I'm embarrassed. By the way, can I see your shirt, Sam?
There we go.
Look at that.
I am for city council.
There you go.
By the way, you know they call me Big H. You know what they call this guy? Big T. See, you got the Big T and the Big H. We're gonna really kick some butt. Sam, I have a problem. Your mayor has lost it. Not mine, your mayor. You know, he arrested me.
Why, did I vote for him?
It doesn't make a difference. He's-
Nobody wants to claim him.
Yeah, really. I wish somebody would.
Sam, what is your, Sam, I'm upset.
Alright, so, so listen, Heshi, I really don't tell you. You wanna talk about homeless shelters?
No, I wanna talk about what you're gonna do. Because you're running for city council and you're upset of all this past people that you have in office over there in Staten Island, forget Brooklyn. What are you gonna do? What, what changes? How, why do you want them out?
So let me explain why I'm a little bit different than the current, so there are five people running to be the Republican nominee. My main opponent would basically be the chief of staff to the current councilman, who was the chief of staff to the then councilman, who was the chief of staff to the then councilman. And you know, it's, it's the claim to fame that I have the right to pick my successor. And that's really a lot of bull crap. What's different about me is I'm 57 years old. I'm not doing this because I need this job. I'm not doing this because I need the pension. That's already taken care of for me. If this guy doesn't get this job, I don't know what it is that he can do. I don't know if he's held a job. I don't know, you know, anything, anything about him.
So, Soya, did you hear what he just said? He doesn't need the job. He doesn't need the pension.
I want this job.
And how old is he? Did you hear how old he is? 57. I'm 57. Both of us are doing this because we don't need the job. We don't need the ego. We wanna actually fix up. Sam, every minute that you sit here, I, I want you to know, I thank God right now. I can't believe what you just said. Word for word that comes out of my mouth and we barely, me and Sam have spoken. When I met him the first time, I was just impressed with him. I went over, I gave him a hug and he let me. Go ahead, Sam. Keep going.
So, you know, you wanna talk about business, right? I, I've owned my own business for 32 years. I own an optical shop on Steinway Street. I was the president of the Steinway Street Business Improvement District. So you talk about the city-
Wait, wait, keep going, keep going. What else were you a former of?
Well, I'm, well, we'll get to that. But also on Staten Island, I was the president of the school board or the CEC, the Community Education Council for seven years. And actually, under my leadership, Staten Island School Board, the Staten Island CEC, was the number one community education council in the city. People, the presidents, when we would have the presidents' meetings, people would come up to me and go, "How is it that you get all this stuff accomplished?" You know, so it, it's just taking a business sense and applying a business sense and applying common sense, not the stupidity. Joel Klein used to say, "Listen, people bring me problems, you bring me solutions." We needed a gifted and talented program on Staten Island for the middle schools because the grammar school program was ending. I personally designed that program. Joel Klein looked at it and said, "This is good." We had to, you know, it couldn't cost money. So we had to figure out the criteria to get people into the program and everything. So I personally developed that program.
So, so look at this. I'm coughing, but-
A businessman involved in the education, an integral part of your community.
No, but you, you missed the whole point. Here is a guy who knows about education, knows about schooling, knows about special needs children. While public schools are in big trouble, here is the man-
So, Heshi, it's gonna, maybe it doesn't surprise you, but there are many, many schools. 115, we're over 95, 90% of the students. But there are schools in New York City where 95% of the students can't read, write or do mathematics on grade level. Now, let's just assume that most of the time, the elected representative for the community represents that community, whether it's in race or religion or whatever it is. So that means that these city council members, Jomani Williams was one of them, anybody who's on the city council right now, they know that they have schools in their districts that are utterly failing students. That's the prison, that's the school to prison pipeline, not the security agents in the school that they wanna take out, right?
The three Rs. They're, even the basics.
So how is it that the city council members allow this to happen in their districts? It's crazy.
Now, are you for school choice?
Of course I'm for school choice.
Now, you hear it? I'm talking to a man who's intelligent, who cares about children, who cares about his community, does not care what race you are, hates, they hate crimes. Do you love the police or not?
I love the police very much and we need to refund the police, not defund the police.
Refund the police.
This is a whole bunch of crap that's going on here. I mean, there's this, there's this socialist leftist agenda that's going on. You know, they wanna get rid of the police. I don't know if you know, but they wanna get rid of the school safety agents in schools too. But now they're saying, "Well, no, we just wanna put it under the control of the Department of Education."
What are the metal detectors for in most of the schools for anyway?
Oh, race baiting, I would imagine.
What do you think about CRT, the Critical Race Theory?
Well, you know, this is, this is crazy. I, I, so what do I think about? I think it's stupid.
Right.
I don't know how much more, how much we need to talk about it.
This is a new form of indoctrinating our children. Not only are they discussing Petri dish experimentation of Frankensteinian new gender breeds that are out there and inculcating our children in sexual orientation that should probably not even exist.
Listen, I didn't go to that many years of college. Hold on there.
These are discussions they should not be having with our children. Do you want people discussing gender with your children in schools?
So, hold on a second. Let me just, let me go back to this, when I mentioned about the school safety agents, right? So they wanna put the control of school safety agents under the Department of Education. The Department of Education can't even freaking teach our kids how to read, write or do mathematics.
The basic three Rs.
They can't, they can't even do that. What, what they want to do is teach grammar school children that you can change your gender. They wanna teach middle school to high school children the drugs you can take to change your gender. But they don't wanna teach you how to do math. Listen, it does not make a difference what the minimum wage is going to be in New York City, if there's going to be a living wage. If our schools cannot educate our children and people that they can get a job to take care of themselves and their family, this city is done. Education is the key to everything.
Wow.
Because the children are our future.
Sam, we, Sam, on June 22nd, when you win your nomination and you will now become the, the candidate, you are going, is there going to be a Democratic candidate coming up against you?
There is a Democratic candidate. It's a gentleman from Brooklyn.
Really?
Leave it at that. So you wanna, you wanna talk about sad. This, my city council seat has been in Republican control for I don't know how many decades. This is the first time that the police unions have lost faith in the Republican establishment candidate. They've lost faith in the chief of staff to the chief of staff to the chief of staff. They have endorsed the Democrat in this race.
You know, that bothers me because I, I as well, I, and I love the police. They did not endorse me. They, for some reason, they're going to endorse an ex-Republican who switched to Democrat. But when I win it, I'll be running against a Republican. And I don't mean to be mean, but I think I'm more qualified. I'm 57, like you said. I know more than her. I know the business. I know the DOB. And like the people are saying here, "We're gonna defund the DOB. We're gonna take these 14 different agencies and you and I are gonna cut $2.2 billion off the budget."
I wanna know what happened with Thrive New York money. Come on. And what about the $8 billion, you know, that went into investigating why our schools are failing? Hello, you needed to figure, I mean, fix it. Hello?
And I want you to know, Mr. Schoolman, that, do you know that the money for the special needs kids, and I was talking to a rabbi today, he says the money is eight, nine months, a year behind paying these teachers all these special programs and now we're gonna lose them. And the money's there. It's not like it's not there. They're just not distributing and it's federal money that's not being distributed.
So, listen, Heshi, I've been on a number of lawsuits and I still am against the city. So I'm a, I'm a plaintiff on a lawsuit of improving education quality. But recently, we just got, you know, those billions of dollars that are coming back to New York City because they weren't funded? I gave testimony in the pre-hearings to that trial. And I guess there was a settlement, right? Already, de Blasio is saying that he wants to take that money and spend it on psychologists to talk to these kids about the pandemic. This money is to go for everyone's education. This money is already spent. It's going for teachers, it's going for books, it's going for classrooms, it's going for all this sort of stuff. And de Blasio is already putting his grubby little paws on this money, saying he wants to specialize it for special programs.
Is this psychologist gonna talk with the mask on or off?
Well, I don't know. Mask on, mask off. Is it like this or like this?
Maybe the children could take off the mask, Debozo. We wouldn't need psychologists.
Take a call, my darling. Take a call, take a call. You have to push the headset button. Hello, you under here with Heshi, Soya and Sam?
Heshi, how are you? Sam, how are you?
Good, good. How you doing? Who's this?
This is Bob from New Jersey.
There you go. How can we help you out there, Bob?
I'm a longtime New York City resident, 55 years. I just, I just left the city along with the other 3.569999 million people.
Too bad, too bad.
And that's actually what my question's about, Sam. Sam, to get right into it, according to Reuters, about 3.57 million people left New York City in 2020. And I know that sounds crazy, but that's Reuters' number.
Is that New York or New York State? New York City, New York State, just to remind.
New York City.
New York City. That's a third of our population.
Well, I, well, well, the, the somewhat good news is that they were replaced by 3.5 million other people. But they were replaced by 3.5 million people earning significantly, um, lower average incomes during that same period, right? So it isn't hard to see with the budget shortfall that's gonna, that's gonna come.
That's alright. We'll just raise our property taxes. Don't worry about it.
Well, that's what I, yeah, Staten Island homeowners in District 50 are gonna get slammed. So given that de Blasio-
Bob, it's not only District 50, Bob.
-is gonna beg people to live in the greatest city in the world. What has the current administration of Council District 50 done to stem the tide? And what should the next council person be prepared to do about all this?
Well, you know, if I had to think about it, I'm sure Steve wrote a very strongly worded letter somewhere complaining about something and somehow, you know, that seems to be, you know, par for the course. So I've been disappointed in the city council people from Staten Island. I mean, everyone says, you know, "You're a Republican. You're one of two Republicans, one of three Republicans in New York City." What the hell is it that you can do? Alright, granted, the problem we have in New York City is that it's one-party domination, okay? And, Heshi, I know you're a Democrat, but if we can work together for common sense issues, I'm not looking to go along to get along. But what I'm disappointed on Staten Island is that no one has used the power of their office to hold a hearing, to hold a rally, to hold these people accountable and point the finger and say, "You have a bad idea." Okay? We need a Department of Taxpayer Affairs. We need to hold the city accountable for the money it does spend. We need to get rid of programs that don't work. You know, that's what we need to do.
Sam, and let me just tell you, the reason I'm a Democrat, I'm a lifelong Democrat-
I'm sorry.
...with, I know.
I'm sorry.
But you and I know and I know-
You can convert.
I know, but if I do become a Republican, I don't think I can accomplish what I want to. And I do wanna be Speaker and I want you to be my co-man over there. Me and you are gonna do it.
Can I be minority leader?
You could be minority leader. Not only that, Sam, I want you to be, I want you, I want, I wanna be bipartisan. I wanna be in a way that Republican-Democrat makes no difference. We're going in there, we're gonna knock out stupid legislation.
It's common sense. It's common sense. And that's something, so, you know, part of my campaign is out-lefting the left, right? So I talk about Gracie Mansion. We talk about homeless shelters. I can understand 30, 40, 50 years ago even more.
Can we turn Gracie Mansion into a homeless shelter?
That's my idea! That or a medical center. The mayor, in, in order-
A mental health center to help, to help Debozo.
Well, they put up a bigger fence so you could smoke marijuana. So I mean, we're halfway there, right?
You know, you know, they just legalized prostitution too, please.
That's because we need the money. The Democrats have nobody left to tax.
I know, I, I know. But, and the problem is, is there's a dumbbell Democrats that were there. We're getting rid of them.
So they didn't really legalize prostitution. They just said, you know, Vance just said, "I'm not going after it anymore," right? It's not a legal issue.
Okay, not yet. But the same way you did with marijuana, now you're gonna legalize this sooner or later and this is gonna kill me that our children can open up a business. But me and Sam, did you hear what he said? Just common sense. We don't, you could be Republican, you could be Democrat. We're gonna get into office. We're gonna make the changes. We're gonna help fix the budget. Here's a man who's run a business, not somebody that came off the street-
Name on the front of paychecks for 32 years.
Budgeting, audits, helping people with jobs. How many jobs have you given over the years? How many people have you helped? Here's a man who's not, you know, governor-
Who hasn't changed his name three times.
And Mr. de, Mr. de Blasio, who runs 330,000 employees-
His name's not really de Blasio.
Well, he calls himself Italian. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I know. It's a sorry.
An insult to the rest of you.
He joined, he joined Sam's team, whatever. But he has, he has pushed hate here. He joined, he joined Sam's team, whatever, but he has, he has pushed hate here, and I love Sam because this is it. It's going to be a common sense city council, it's going to be, you know, Tiffany Caban, and she's one of mine, I'm sorry to tell you, I apologize to you, she's Democrat, she's going to let murderers, rapists, child molesters out. You know, there's a guy now who defaced four synagogues in the Bronx, is it?
Yes, they had to let him go.
Now, so, my friend, who's a Supreme Court Judge, Louis Knox, said, "No, it's a hate crime," and he made him have bail. What did de Blasio do? Knocked him, gave him to another job, and let him have bail.
I think that judge is house, who released him?
How about all the politicians who raised money to bail people out of jail who committed crimes during the riots and stuff like that?
They should be prosecuted.
What are we talking about here?
They should be prosecuted.
Where is, where is the common sense? Where is the reality in New York? What is wrong with you people?
I don't know, we live in a country where, where we have other politicians in office committing treason. In, in days of old.
Yeah, look at John Kerry.
In days of old, they were taken out to the middle of the square in the town, and they were hung. And nowadays, we just, I don't know, we just live in a crazy society.
Everybody, everybody's asking where Sam is running. Sam is running on the, in the 50th District in Staten Island.
I got it, I got it, I got it.
Go ahead, go ahead, pitch it.
Listen, I'm born and raised on Staten Island, I live on Manor Road, a lot of you may know me because I had that big T on my lawn in 2016, I put it up with Scott Lebato, and some coward came by one night.
The artist.
The patriot artist.
Patriot artist.
Some coward came by one night and set it on fire. So, what did we do? We put up an even bigger T just to say, "Stick it to you," and the city came and fined me $2,400.
Do you have a website?
Why, why did they find you?
Because it wasn't an H.
Was it too big?
It wasn't an H.
It wasn't an H.
Yes.
Can I ask, what's your website?
So, I can be found at samforstatenisland.com, you can find me on Facebook at Sam for City Council. Look me up, I could certainly use your help, I need volunteers, I can need some contributions, everything is an eight-to-one matching fund.
You know, I'm, you know, I'm contributing to your fund tonight.
That would be wonderful. Million is spelt with an M there.
It's sad, it's sad, you know, you know, marijuana is still not officially legal, so, okay? You can't be smoking. But, everybody, you hear what he is, Sam for?
Samforstatenisland.com. Okay? Listen, most people on Staten Island know me, just, you know, from my time on the school board and all that sort of stuff, and, you know, let's, let's go to another call and see what kind of questions we get, because I can just go on and on and on and on.
Good, I want you to, because I want people to vote for you.
Hi, you're on the air with Heshi, Sawyer, and Sam.
Hi, guys.
Hi.
My name is Christine, I'm calling in, I have a question for Sam.
Good.
Go for it.
Sam, I, I'm, I'm in Staten Island, I'm in the 50th District, and I'm a parent that had a religious exemption to vaccinations, so I'm looking closely at candidates that are running. What's your stance on vaccines and vaccine mandates?
Okay, so, you know, I, I always start this with saying that I don't really mean to piss anybody off, but I don't know what the heck happened to the My Body, My Choice movement, right? So, the idea behind the vaccine is if I get the vaccine, that means I won't get sick. So, if you don't get the vaccine, you get sick. Now, I don't mean to sound crass, but what do I care if you get sick? Okay? I'm protected. So, if I want to protect myself and my family, because this is something I believe in.
Logic.
Go right ahead. Now, I will say.
No, no, common sense, listen to him.
I, I will say that myself included never thought that the religious exemption would disappear, because we thought religious groups like mine, like yours, had it covered. We got screwed, okay?
Yeah.
So, it's, that goes back to the one-party politics, it's only Democrats, there's no common sense, there's no such thing as a moderate Democrat anymore, because there are radical Democrats. So, Christine, you know, to answer your question, I think it's ridiculous to mandate vaccines for any, forget a religious exemption, if you don't want it, you don't get it. You're the one allegedly, technically, scientifically, you're the one at risk, not the people who get it. So, why are these people imposing it on you?
We have another caller.
We're going to take another call, but look at this, common sense, Sam, you're wonderful. I happen to have taken the vaccine, and like you said, it's your body, you do what you want with it, and I fully agree with you 100%. I took it to, so, I can shut people up once and for all, I know they're calling me traitor, but it makes no difference. And, and you know, and, and by the way, you can't blame all the Democrats for what happened. You had two, you had two tyrants, Cuomo and de Blasio, who took over this city, who forced us into it. My community that I fought for June was all open till now, so I don't care.
Listen, I'm sorry, I, I'm going to have to disagree with you there, because you forgot AOC.
Yeah.
But you also have people, and I'm going to even say, you go against.
She's Congress again.
You have to go, yeah, but that's okay.
I think we have someone on the air.
It, it goes against Chuck Schumer too. I mean, these are people who saw it coming, they let it come in, now they're afraid. Look at what happened to Crowley up, you know, with, with the Bronx. I mean, it's just, he got defeated, and that's what's happening, you know, and Schumer's next on the list, so, people are afraid.
Go ahead, who's on the phone? Hello, you on the air?
You're on the air with Heshi, Sawyer, and Sam.
Hey, Heshi, hey, Sam, my name is Nick, I live pretty close in a public housing district to Sam's district, and I noticed he brought up that he was thinking about turning Gracie Mansion into a homeless shelter, which I think is a great idea. And he also mentioned he wanted city council district offices to be in NYCHA developments, so I wondered if he can expand on his plan on that.
So, my goal here is to out-left the left, right? So, let's take the NYCHA things first. So, part of the problem I have is when you become an elected official, "Ooh, you're so special." Listen, I have to get up and go to work every day just like everybody else, whether it's an elected official or not. As an elected official, I owe you more than if I'm just working for myself. So, I think to take away some of the privileges is that if you have a project in your district, you should be mandatorily staffing in office in that project at least two to three days a week. You need to go and work there and see what your constituency has to go through when they live in the projects. You should not get your own healthcare plan, you should get the basic Medicaid healthcare plan. You should see what your constituency has to go through when they go to the doctor.
Wow, wow. Sam, I, I, I promise you, this is just brilliant, and you're 100% correctly, I always didn't like NYCHA because they mistreat their people. I worked in the, in the, in the NYCHA buildings for about three years, doing, independent, changing the stoves and toilets and trying to help people, and you're right, you have to see what they're going through.
How can you help people if you're in an ivory tower? It's really what it boils down to.
That's exactly what it is.
Okay? And, and that's what it is. And let me, just cover the Gracie Mansion thing, right? So, I could understand, that's how it was years ago, but now we have Zoom, right? We have Subways, you can get to Gracie Mansion from the Bronx to Staten Island in minutes. We don't need it. It can be a homeless shelter, it can be a healthcare facility, as well as City Hall, okay? I have, I mean, I've heard stories of city council people bragging that they don't really have to do so much during the pandemic. They got their, did you get your checks during the pandemic? I had a, you know, I didn't get paid during the pandemic.
Right, right.
Okay, so, these people were bragging about this. So, if they don't need that space, let's convert it into something that would be useful, because politics is not too useful. How's that working out for you?
Do you know how many properties the city owns and has taken over from people? They've made their homes because, you know, because they couldn't afford, and they were fining them.
Well, that's taxes, that goes back to.
No, no, but I'm saying the city owns so much property, they don't need those big buildings. You know how big, how much property Gracie Mansion takes and City Hall?
I understand there's a historical context there, okay? But there's also a human leftist, there's a human context too, you know? So, that's what we really need to do, is take care of the human context, and I, I don't think the Democrats need an office in City Hall, and I certainly don't think de Blasio needs to be living in Gracie Mansion. He has a place in Park Slope.
Let him go back there.
What's wrong with that? Why do I have to fund that?
Sam, I'm going to ask you a truthful question, and, and I like you, and you know that, we have to discuss with you, I love Curtis Lebow, even though he, he, so, he's a Republican, he supported my, my opponent, well, I'm going to run against November 2nd. See, I have five people with me, and I'm going to be running against one Republican that was a Democrat originally. My question to you is, is, I don't know if Curtis has a chance, which I really do like him. Who do you think is going to win the Democrat? I mean, you know whoever wins Democrat, like you said it to one party system, who's going to be our next mayor? What do you think? We, I know what you want, Curtis, but what do you think?
Well, you know, obviously, I think it's going to come down to Yang.
And you don't like Eric Adams?
Um.
Eric was, is a Brooklyn, is, is a Brooklyn Borough President. He knows New York. Yang has no experience.
Well, so, this isn't what you asked me. You asked me who I thought it was going to come down, who I thought it was going to come down to, right? Okay.
Okay, so, that's the point. So, you, that's what you're saying, and that's we're going to have another inexperienced mayor like de Blasio taking over our city, who's going to be crazy and leftist, and I'm going to have to deal with that.
Well, I don't know that Eric Adams has the experience, that's good for me.
Really? But you have no choice, it's either Yang or, or Adams, let's be honest. So, you don't, you don't think either one, or you would pick Yang?
I'm sorry, I, I'm not going to make this choice, because my choice would be Curtis Lebow. It would be a mistake for me to say this is the Democrat I like.
Mine as well, mine as well, but, you know.
It's choosing between two devils.
We have another caller.
Go ahead. You on the air with Heshi, Pumien, Sawyer, Sam?
Hello, Heshi, or should I say Big H, Sawyer, and Sam?
Speaker, take the speaker button off, only the headset. Hello? Only the headset, only the headset button. We lost you, Eddie from Dakar Heights.
That was Eddie?
It was Eddie, how can you?
I'm sorry, Eddie.
You better call Eddie back in.
Oh, my gosh, I'm in trouble now.
You're in big trouble, Eddie's one of our favorite callers. You better call back, let's see if there's any other questions for you. And we do have another question for you, and I want to ask you a question, Sam. What committees do you think, I mean, you're going, I'm, I know, I know what committee I want. I want to go after the DOB, the DOT, the DOF, the DOS, I'm the most experienced, now that I have you there.
Which committee was that?
I got like a head spinning, EIO.
No, 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 I'm combining them, because nobody oversees them, there is no committee watching these five agencies that we can save money in. But besides that, do you have any special committees that you think that you would be, and not only that, be qualified and be grateful, but I want you to be chairperson of that committee?
Well, so, I'm alive and I have a brain, so that really gets entitled to me to be chairperson of everything, right?
I agree with you 100%.
But, business and education, that's my forte. I've been in business for 32 years, I've had the Department of Consumer Affairs walk in and go, "Oh, you know, that, that one item doesn't have a price tag, here's a $200 fine." You know, now, you know, listen, you can't do bags, they're arguing about foreign clothing. Meanwhile, we have people urinating in the streets, they're giving out needles, all of this stuff, and, and every day I go to put my key in the door, and I'm like, "What fine am I going to get today?"
Right, right.
You know? Years ago, when I was on the Steinway bid, it used to be that the sanitation department could come and give you a fine any time of day. And I believe it was the Steinway bid that kind of negotiated the deal with the city, said, "Listen, we're store owners, we're business owners."
And it was revised, where they can only give it to you during certain hours of operation.
Right, right, between 10 and 12, 2 and 4, or maybe different citywide.
And people, you should be considerate, you should just know, when you go to a store and you put down a coffee cup, or you throw down a shopping bag in front of a store, they get a $100 ticket, and if they don't fight it or something, it goes up, I think, to $300.
There is no, there is no fighting it.
It's, it's, it really is like robbery.
There's a war, there's a war on cars in the city, you have to pay for parking, it's crazy.
You get tickets now from the buses.
They're taking away parking spaces.
From the buses, $350 if you get photographed from, from a city bus.
But that's not even what I'm talking about, they're taking away the corner parking, okay? They're putting in the bikes. If you live north of 96th Street, you're going to, as a resident, you're going to have to get a permit. They want to put a bike lane on the Brooklyn Bridge, taking away a third lane of vehicular traffic to put a bike lane. How stupid can we be here?
Right.
Okay? So, I want to know, look at all the people who are dying in bicycling accidents and things like that. Why aren't these people licensed? Why don't, you know, if you're going to get rid of all the cars, who's going to pay the taxes that support the roads? Right? So, you need your bicycles, you know, when you look at these bike lanes, there's really nobody in most of the lanes that I see, okay? But then you see people with these electric scooters and the scooters, they drive in the lane, they're on the sidewalk, they're back in the lane, they're on the sidewalk, all over the place. There's no regulation, so.
You're just throwing in more danger.
Right.
And who's paying for it?
I, I think that there should be a requirement for bicyclists and people on scooters to pay a tax. It's crazy.
Now, you know about the congestive pricing, that you have to pay a tax crossing Manhattan?
Yes.
Is that?
On the East River Bridges.
Is that just crazy? He's passing it when we tried to stop him so many times? You can't do that. I mean, you just can't keep fining and doling and taxing us. If you would let business come in, you'd let business run, the businesses bring in tourists, they spend money, we can collect money that way, even with the ticket agents, they walk around, they ticket us day and night, all you have to do is have them move traffic along. You and I can solve these traffic problems, two, like you said, common sense ideas, how to move traffic along, they just don't care. Ticket, we should use all these ticket agents.
So, let me talk about a traffic problem we have on Staten Island. So, I live on Manor Road, but down Manor Road and Rockland Avenue, by the, by the nursing home, Egbert Ravine, there's a very bad intersection that needs to be widened a little bit, right? So, I think that we need to put in a straight-through lane on both sides, where fortunately there happens to be land, and your people, "How are you going to do that?" Like the naysayers. Stop with the negativity. I understand it's difficult, I understand it's parkland, but you know what? When the park needs a new surface, and you say, "I'm not going to fund it as a city councilman because you're not giving me that over there," I think they'll, listen, it's got to be negotiated. It's not so much we have a building problem, we have an infrastructure problem. Some of our roads on Staten Island are cow paths that have been paved over.
Yeah.
Okay? Now, I don't want to make the whole thing wide, I just want to improve that intersection, then the intersection by Richmond also. So, we need to improve the traffic situations and problems we have.
Again, the DOT controls, and we have no power over them, like, I have a problem in Manhattan Beach on Oriental and Ocean Avenue, where they have drag racing, a yellow light that never turns red or turns red, and I have people getting accidents. All I need is a police officer, a traffic agent. Don't be worried. Put the cameras there. Not cameras on Ocean Parkway. That's where we should get it. Let's take line one, Soy. Please help her. Please don't lose the call. Hello, you're on the air with Heshi, Sam and Soy.
Well, hello, hello, Big H, Soy and Sam.
Hey, Eddie, I'm sorry.
Eddie, do you like, do you like who I have on the show tonight?
You gotta get that down, Soy. Heshi, that was a good joke.
Thank you, thank you.
What joke?
Oh, wow.
A joke about who I'm gonna represent.
Sam, get out, Sam.
It's Big H. He's always teasing her.
What's doing, do you like-
Soy, I'm sorry I missed you last Friday. I went to, I went to the headquarters. It's there about 11:30 on Friday, because I figure it's a good day, no alternate parking.
Well, by the way, we're gonna do town hall meetings over there, Mosabe Thursdays. I'm gonna try to pick a day, and I want people to come and go. I'm gonna have meetings of the whole community, any community come in to ask questions. Remember, me and Sam are just not gonna be city council of our district, which we are. We're gonna be city councilmen of the entire city.
That's what we need.
That's right. We need somebody to care about all communities, hate crimes. We need to be worried about different religions. We are one people. We are one city. And Mr. de Blasio did not know that, and Mr. Cuomo has no idea. He's so busy with New York City, he has a whole state to run, and I'm ashamed of him. He might even run again. And de Blasio, I hear, is gonna run for governor. Do you believe that?
Now, that's a joke. Why didn't you open the show with that one, huh?
That's what I should have. Eddie, Eddie, what's doing, Eddie? Do you like my guest, Sam, tonight?
Yes, I certainly wanna give him best intentions for winning.
Thanks, Eddie.
And I especially liked, he's perfectly correct, electric scooters. It started with bicycles, with the influx of new immigrants about four years ago. People have only, I'm sure, there must be more accidents, because I remember my wife almost got hit on the, on an overpass near where I live. But the electric scooters, no licenses, on license plates or anything.
They drive on the highways with no licenses.
That's right. And I'm sure part of the reason is that the police are slow, flabbergasted and disillusioned, because at one time, I believed I used to confiscate those bikes.
Yep.
Well, I wanna ask you one question, Eddie, before you get off the thing, and both of you. You know, Donald, President Donald Trump was yesterday or today officially banned for life from Facebook. Can that be done? Is that allowed?
Yeah, but he's got a new platform of himself.
What's that platform called?
I believe it's Donald J., Donald J. Trump dot com. And I saw it, I saw it on, I saw it on, now, listen, there's a new news station that's very anti-red China, but very pro-conservative. It's called NTD, all in capital letters, NTDTV.com. I discovered it on the, over-the-air broadcast, 33.7. They mentioned that, and they showed a picture of it. So if you research it, I'm sure you could find it. It's not fully developed yet, but he's the only one using it, and he did have a message on there. So even if they do that, you know, just like, just like if your road to going someplace is blocked, you find an alternate route. Well, Donald's gotta find an alternate route, and the rest of us do.
Well-
It's pure censorship. I was having that conversation with someone today. He said, well, how can it be censorship if it's a private company? It's censorship because they're blocking Republicans and conservatives. Meanwhile, they don't know anything about Hunter Biden, you know?
Right.
Oh, Giuliani, the ready?
Yeah, look what they did to Giuliani. Here's the hard drive. Now, we don't want that.
No, no, we don't, but it's funny. They're so stupid, the FBI. Just think about it. Then, no, 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 no. Giuliani stood there giving them the hard drive, and he said, here, here's all the evidence, but this one has Hunter Biden. And, and they're coming there to investigate him, but they trust him that he's telling the truth.
Yeah, well, if he ends that order, that's actionable evidence. They have to take action.
But what if it's really evidence against him? How stupid, how stupid are the FBI that they're actually taking his word? I know he's telling the truth, but how do they know he's telling the truth?
But I hear, but you know that after, after the rally in Washington, DC-
They're a joke.
You know, I happened to be at the rally in Washington, DC, and I had people attacking me for it and turning me into the FBI and all sorts of stuff like that. There were Facebook posts against me. They literally want to have indoctrination camps to teach me not to like Trump or to change the way we think. Hello, what, does that sound familiar to you?
I'm sorry, Eddie, did you hear about the CRT in Critical Race Theory in the schools now?
Oh, stop with this.
No, 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 you don't understand. It's a collective guilt and neo-segregation. This would essentially be state-sanctioned racism. You're teaching people that are white to hate themselves. They should have guilt over anything else. It's crazy.
Well, all I know is, thank you, Eddie, for your call. You're just great, Eddie. I'm gonna bump into you.
Best wishes. Good night.
Thank you.
Take it easy, Eddie.
I just want you to know, when me and Sam get into city council, we will concentrate on the schools. We will try, we have four years to, oh, really, two years, I think, because of the redistricting. That's another stupid thing that we're gonna be dealing with. But we are going to go into city council. We're gonna come up with good ideas for our school system. We are gonna be able to fix a lot of this curriculum. We're gonna fight with the mayor and who he's gonna pick as the new chancellor.
So who is the mayor? Is it, is it de Blasio or is it the UFT guy? Because I think it's the UFT guy.
Yeah, right.
I don't, I don't think it's de Blasio.
It's not, but all I know is he has no idea what he's doing. And I just want you to know, Mr. de Blasio, we're not gonna let you open up, you know, he's making leases for 90 new homeless shelters, and he's gonna sign leases, but you and I-
So let me, let's go into the homeless shelter. So there's a new homeless shelter coming into my district, okay?
Mine as well.
My district has the city council minority leader. How is it that the city council minority leader and his chief of staff had no idea that this was coming? Okay, so we also have another homeless shelter coming down Victory Boulevard, and I wanna talk about pensions, you know, things like that. So here's the problem. Our current Borough President and our current councilwoman for that district, their term limited out of office, but they haven't made their, they haven't reached their pension yet. They're, they still need more time. So I'm not gonna fight that, because if I fight that, how am I gonna get a job from the Democrats?
Right.
Okay, so I am not doing this for my pension. I'm doing this to put you first, okay? And that's really just the way it needs to be. That's what we need out of our politicians. Not people who go along to get along, because I'm gonna put my time in. Recently, there was a golf outing. This guy told me, he was talking to a city councilman at the golf outing, who said, I'm just putting my time in. As soon as I make my pension, I am out of here. You don't need that in office. You gotta get away from that.
You know, all the ills we are suffering start with the city council and the mayor. Mask mandates, COVID mandates, COVID mishandling, allocation of monies, rezoning, rezoning, police, permits, sanitation, homelessness, upsurge in crime. All these issues and so many more depend on the elected officials we essentially hire. We, we put them into office. People think who you're electing and go out and vote. The next election for the councilman, for the mayor, I believe, is June 22nd. People go out and vote.
Early voting starts on the 22nd.
And one more thing.
Wait, let him tell about, tell us about the early voting.
Every vote counts. People don't think that your vote doesn't count, because it could be by a few votes that that person becomes elected.
Especially when there's five candidates, and you have, what is it called?
Rank, well, I call it ranked choice voting, but it's called ranked choice.
Ranked choice.
People don't realize how important their votes are.
What, what, what number on the ballot are you? I'm number four.
Oh, I'm number one.
Oh, you, you, okay, boy. Okay, well, good. I'm gonna have to see. So how does early, how does early balloting, early voting work, Sam?
So, you know, if people don't like the lines on Election Day, it could be a problem. So early voting, it's not necessarily the same place you go to vote, but when you get your voter registration in the mail, you could look it up. It tells you where you can do your early voting. So that's basically it. It's a legitimate thing. You know, the Democrats needed to extend the amount of time for Democrats to get there, you know, all right.
But what about mail-in, what about mail-in voting? Not absentee ballots. How do you get, they say you can do a mail-in voting.
You have to probably request a ballot. During the presidential election, they would just send to you.
Uh-huh. So you have to call up the Board of Elections, and they mail it to you. And if you don't do it now, you're in big trouble. And you have to have, I think you have to have it mailed in like a week before or something of that nature. So guys, if you wanna vote, you wanna get us there, you wanna go away, every, every vote is important for me and Sam. You're looking over here, it's two. Sam has the other two Republicans. I have a couple of Democrats. We can go in with power, 26 votes. We can make this city better. We can make this city great again from Staten Island, Brooklyn, Bronx, Queens, Manhattan. It's time to change, you know, Manhattan.
It's time to put the shine back on the apple.
Right, guys, we gotta bring this city back. You know, the mayor's telling us, I'm opening the city. And then he's fighting, you know, the mayor and the governor are fighting. Let me tell you a quote that your mayor said. This is, you're gonna love this. Just let me say this to you. Where is it? I have it right over here in front of me. "De Blasio trashes Governor Cuomo's plan to reopen. Says his plan is better."
So New Yorkers have been so screwed with this feud between the mayor and the governor that, you know, they're, they're out-liberalizing each other, and we are stuck in the middle, and it's just really been a disaster. They should both be penalized for this.
Right.
Or the killer.
It's just horrible.
Plus, I wanna open up investigations into de Blasio. You know, there was a whole thing with Mr. Rechnitz and, you know, a whole bunch of criminal investigations. And he got away with it, de Blasio, while other people went to jail. We have to investigate, just like they tried to do.
So it makes you think that everybody, everybody must be on the take.
They must be. And you and I, when we get in there, we're the only ones that are clean. Me and him are not looking for pensions. We're 57 years old, both of us.
I also think city council people shouldn't get pensions. You should get an IRA contribution, but you shouldn't get a pension. You shouldn't get, you should get Medicaid as your medical plan, right? And you should have an office in the projects.
You should have an office, right, and we have our-
With the people.
With the people. Hello?
Well-
That's not AOC. I don't know what to tell you.
Well, we have five minutes left. If you guys wanna call into the show, I think it's your call on hold. 718-289-0070. 718-289-0070.
Are you an only child?
No, I'm, I'm the oldest son of two, and downstairs, there's a sister with special needs, and I had 21 foster kids come through.
Did you get hand-me-down clothing?
We have a caller.
Hand-me-down clothing? Are you kidding me? I had holes in my shoes, and I was so happy that only one of them had it.
So if you didn't like hand-me-downs then, why do we take it from our politicians? I'm running against the hand-me-down. Hello, caller.
You're on the air with Sam, Heshi and Soy. Hello?
Hello?
Yes.
Yeah, hi.
Am I on?
You sure are. What's your question?
Okay, my question's like this. I'm a big Heshi fan, and my mother is not. How can I convince her?
Your mother's not my fan. Usually mothers are. They usually know.
My mother didn't like the protest on 13th Avenue. I did.
Well, let me explain. Thank you very much, caller, and I'm gonna tell you. And Sam, I'm gonna tell you about this protest, which I was arrested for. The protest happened not by me. It was on a holiday. It was set up by a Mr. Bloom, by the way. He set it up, and the police knew it was nothing to do with me. I passed by with our councilman at the time, and I went home. I had to go to another event at 9:30, 10 o'clock.
And then he was called.
No, no, then I went home, went to bed early that night, like about 12 o'clock, which I usually go to bed like about 11:30, 12 o'clock. I went to bed a little bit early, and 1 o'clock, I get a call from the police, from the deputy inspector. "Heshi, get over here." I said, what are you kidding me? Get over here. The kids are making fires with their masks. Come over there.[1486.96]